This is Henry Migala with East County Magazine here with Tony Orlando, who is running for one of the two open seats on the La Mesa City Council. Tony Orlando is a La Mesa City Commissioner currently serving on the city's Personnel Appeals Board. In addition, Tony is also the pastor of Life Point Church. Tony, thank you for making time and joining us today.
Henry, thank you so much for having me. I'm honored.
So I mentioned just a little bit about your background, but please tell us about your background. How did you get here and what motivated you to run for the La Mesa City Council?
That's a great question. Yeah, I've grown up in East County, so I'm an East County for life guy. I relocated to the Bay area for a little bit for college and then came back 20 years ago. My wife and I have lived here in La Mesa for 21 years and we've, you know, raised our kids here. We shop here, we do everything here, you know, we've done so many things apart. We've actually planted a church here. Our church started actually 10 years ago this last month, really in the Lake Murray area of La Mesa, and then we're now in the downtown village area 10 years later. So probably to answer your question too, as far as like what motivated me to run, we've all, you know, I've kind of dedicated my life's work for sure the last 10 years and really for the 27 years I've been doing what I'm doing as it relates to pastoral care and pastoral ministry, is really serving the community, how we can partner and, and reach across, you know, communities and, and families and help do our part to adopt and embrace, you know, those who, who need help. And so that's kind of been my life's work. So, you know, incremental steps to get here, honestly. So being on the, you know, we've done plenty of adoption things with local schools like Maryland Avenue Elementary and, and other, you know, schools in, in the area. But Henry, what we've done too is, you know, you know, we try to ingratiate ourselves in the culture. It's not necessary for a pastor to live in the community that he pastors in, but I think it is very helpful. So there's intentionality, why we live in La Mesa, why our church is here, why we do everything pretty much here in this city. So as to the why, I was, you know, already serving on the Personnel Appeals Board. This is actually my second commission. I think I'm year five of my, of the, of my time serving on the Personnel Appeals Board, which has been a great experience for me. And on top of that, you know, there's been opportunity for me to get further involved. We started an initiative about two years ago called Serve La Mesa. It's really an initiative by our church that does a lot of mobile type service. For example, we're just, we're just, we're a part of the September, excuse me, the August movie in the park at MacArthur Park for the city, and we're a part of the next one. And what we do is we bring on a mobile trailer and our church provides really at no cost cotton candy, snow cones, popcorn, all that kind of stuff. So it's just really a way to give back. And, and we're, so that's kind of been our passion, our driving force. Then, you know, rewind a little bit to about May of 2020. We all know, we're very familiar with what happened in our city with the riots happening in downtown. And I was, I say sadly privileged, but I was still privileged, sad are the circumstances, Henry. But I was privileged to be brought in as a faith leader with the Chief of Police at that time. And he had called us in, obviously, you know, we're right on the heels, you know, 48 hours removed from, you know, the, the fires and some of the other things that were going on. Our church bank, Chase Bank burned to the ground, Union Bank burned to the ground. I was watching on Facebook Live about 25,000 watchers, Henry Wall. I'm, you know, and, and in my, in my home here, I was sitting in this chair actually, and watching this fire at the Randall Lamb building, which is, I could see my office. I have an office in downtown. My office is in the back. I could see my office. And I'm, you know, thinking about my, my life's library, my books, and I'm realizing this is just stuff. This, this doesn't matter. This is just stuff. Everything else that's going on is far more serious. So something, something began, I think, stir. I've been thinking about this opportunity to run for City Council about 15 years ago. Wasn't in a rush, wasn't in a hurry. If it never happened, I was okay too. But I've always been kind of thinking about it, even praying about it from a faith perspective on my part. And so those moments at the police headquarters where the chief brought us in, and I'm there in police headquarters, the chief really just asked if we would come there as support and kind of spiritual guidance at that time. And when he would go out, we would go out. So we would be there in headquarters. And when the BLM friends were over here on this side of the street, we would go out with him and greet them and talk to the crowd. When the East County, defend East County folks were on, by the American Legion Hall, we would go on that side. And then we would come back in, you know, and, and reconvene. And I'll never forget this, Henry. I remember being there, you know, this is late May 2020, and I'm in the police, the Chief of Police's headquarters, his conference room actually. And I'm about, I'm at the end of the conference table and, and the chief's at the other end. And right behind him, so about 15 feet away from me is a National Guard with, with an automatic rifle on the balcony of police headquarters. And, and I'm, and I'm sitting here like, I, we always say the word surreal is kind of a overhused word. We don't know what to say. But it was like the surreal moment of like, what is going on? You know, La Mesa, Jewel of the Hills, this little, you know, tucked away. I, you know, Henry, I encounter people all the time, you know, people not from La Mesa that do not know where La Mesa is at, that have never heard from San Diego, that do not know where La Mesa is at. And now all of a sudden, La Mesa finds itself literally in the crosshairs of social unrest, some of the things that were happening at that time that were quite the challenge that we all are well aware of. And I'm, I'm literally sitting there going, this is happening in our city. And so I think something at that time, Henry, began to stir inside of me that I need to do more. You know, I, I really, I value my civic responsibility, whether volunteer or otherwise, I value that. And I, that's probably where the fire started burning a little more about two, two and a half years ago. And then the opportunity presented itself, you know, my friend Laura Lothian, she, she ran last year for the unexpired term of Dr. Akela Weber, and Laura won. And then, so she is now running for her now, which would be her first full term. And so Bill Baber announced his retirement, you know, I believe January of this year. And it really opened the door. It paved the way for me to, to say yes to, to running for the second open, open seat. So that's kind of where I find myself right now. Maybe a little too much share there, but a little bit of backstory of kind of how I got here.
Exactly what I asked. So thank you for sharing all of that. That was very kind of you. I went through your website and I looked at some of your issues and priorities that you were running on. And one of them is keeping the community safe. And on your website, you write, "On May 30th, as you alluded to the riots, we saw people riot and burn parts of La Mesa to the ground. Businesses destroyed, livelihoods lost, and the community divided. I never want that to happen to La Mesa or anywhere else ever again. I'll stand tall with our law enforcement personnel." Well, some people would say that the actions of the law enforcement contributed to the riot. What do you see as the causes of the riots of May 30th?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very, very good question, Henry, that has probably a number of answers. I, I, back to the conversation we were having prior, you know, I got a little bit more, not an insider's view, but I got a different perspective being inside police headquarters. I think a couple of things were at play here. You know, we have a great city that's really, it's not overly, there's not too much crime. There's still crime in any city, but, but really we have a, we have a great police force that I think has done a wonderful job. I don't think anyone expected what happened. And honestly, not, I don't think anyone was prepared for what was to follow. And so there's been criticism for sure, looking back of police could have done more. Why didn't they step in? And, and there were a lot of reasons that I don't want to get into because I don't know, I don't have the sources cited to really say why they weren't there. Why did they allow the buildings to burn down? Why did we ever, you know, get to that place? But, but, you know, my, my, my hope is that we never have, have to face that again. That was such a tragic moment. And this is where I'm, you know, I'm not only a supporter of law enforcement just in general prior and even currently, but I'm, I'm a fan of, we need to bolster up what we do have. And even, you know, they've had a, they've had a challenge even hiring more people since COVID and since some of the, the challenges that, that arose out of the riot, post riots of, of May of 2020. So I, you know, that is, that's a really tough thing to say of what happened and why and who was to blame. You know, I, at the time, I could just speak, I wouldn't speak on behalf of him, but I can speak of, of hearing the heart of the chief at the time, the now retired chief. He was devastated. He was devastated by what, by what happened. But I know he was doing everything in his power he could to be able to keep our city safe, to be able to prevent anything further from happening, which it was already, you know, already out of control at the Von Shopping Center, you know, the playing against sports and that whole shopping center really got looted and somewhat demolished. And the other buildings already mentioned that actually got burned to the ground. So, so I, I know there was great devastation. And I also noticed too, that, that all the other officers, because I'm, I have a relationship with some of the officers as well. Some of the, the PTSD and the weight that, that has been on them even since then has been, has been very challenging for them. That, yes, it happened on our watch. It happened on La Mesa's watch. And we had other things that, that ensued after that. And, and obviously, you know, we're not, we're not going to sweep under the rug why this happened. You know, we had an incident at a trolley stop, which, which is very well documented that happens. And I, and I don't, don't quote me on it, Henry, but within, I want to say 48 to 72 hours of the George Floyd incident, which was national news. And now all of a sudden, we have an altercation with a young black man, an officer at a trolley stop. And it was like, America's at a fever pitch at this point anyway. We're all in lockdown. COVID has got everyone really cabin crazy, right? We're, we're all, we're all going through cabin fever right now. People are wanting something to do and get out. There's, there's anger. There's, there's pain. There's this racial unrest, this social unrest that's happening. And, and like I said, I just, I felt like sadly, La Mesa got caught in this perfect storm of what became national news and, and a similar incident, not, not, you know, not in kindly yet similar with, with the racial tension. And that, I believe that just escalated to a point where that's, that's when it all started. And so now we find ourselves 48 hours, 72 hours later, dealing with the after effects of, of those coming in and really storming the city.
Yeah. We, after those events, we went into a two-year lockdown. We're kind of coming out of it. How do you see La Mesa after the riots and two years of the lockdown and coming out of the pandemic? You know, there was a Citizens Oversight Committee. What do you, has the police been reformed? Do they need to be reformed? How's it doing? Does it need to be more?
Yeah. And I wasn't a part of the, I'm familiar with the Police Oversight Board. I know that was created, I think, I believe for accountability and other things like that. And, and I don't believe there, there was need for reform. I, I believe, I believe what happens is in times like this, and I would just say this, this is just my opinion, and I'm not putting this on anyone else. But, but I think there, there are some officers, and we, we talked about this at police headquarters. Unfortunately, out of, out of a quality, huge, broad, broad stroke of officers all across this nation, men and women alike who serve law enforcement, there's really only a small percentage who are not nice people, who have malicious intent, or who have racial, you know, bias or something else a part of who they are. Unfortunately, that's, that, those things happen and have happened. And that's what we see brought to the forefront. And when it comes to our city, that, that wasn't the case. And I don't know that there was reform necessary. Now, I know there has been awareness. You know, it's like, I would equate it like this, whenever, when Jack in the Box years ago had an E. coli outbreak, which was a major deal, almost, they almost like, like folded as, as a franchise. After all that, Jack in the Box was probably the safest place to eat anywhere because they had gone through extra measures to make sure that they were the safest place to eat. And I would say that the same about our law enforcement. You know, one incident does not define an entire culture, which is our law enforcement. And moving forward, they have picked up the pieces. They have, you know, they've lost officers, you know, as, as many law enforcement across, across this nation. As I said, officers retire early, get out of law enforcement, take an early retirement, like I said. But I, I think they have really bounced back and, and been resilient and proven that, that they can overcome something that really unfortunately put many officers in a light that shouldn't have been brought upon them because it wasn't their actions that led us here. So, so all, all that said, I hope, I hope that makes, you know, somewhat sense. But to even answer like the second part of your question there too, Henry, is how has La Mesa kind of recovered? I believe it's taken time. I, you know, some businesses obviously did not make it. You know, COVID had nothing to do with the riots, but COVID, you know, really decimated some of our business. You know, in my, in my travels in the last six months, really since formally announced my campaign for La Mesa City Council, I've been talking to small business owners and they, they absolutely got hammered over COVID. You know, whether it was hair salons, I know the owner Gary of Wolf and Sparrow Salon right there on Jackson. I know other small business owners, you know, in, in the village, and they just absolutely, you know, because they were not able to meet, you know, Bobos were shut down for like six months. You couldn't even really, there was, it was even, you know, conversation about them not even reopening at that time. So, so now to bounce back, and now, you know, here's what we're dealing with now, post-COVID. Well, we, we say we're in this post-COVID culture. I hope we are. This post-COVID culture, presuming that's the case, we're dealing with the effects of what COVID produced, whether it was loss of revenue, having to pay back stimulus, you know, or, you know, loan money or whatever, or just trying to build back clientele. And then we're in, in a state of inflation right now, which now restless, just say restaurants alone, they're having to charge way more than they ever did before. So, and people are making decisions go, hey, a family of four. So I, I have two kids, my wife, and we have two kids. Henry, if we want to go to just a middle, I say middle of the road, like a California Pizza Kitchen or a Chili's or what, it's 80 to 100 bucks for a family of four to eat out. So you're making decisions to not go eat out, which affects the revenue of the local business, which affects the taxes those businesses give back to the city. So it becomes cyclical and it all comes back around. So do I think we're at a good place? Yes, I do. I think we're better than where we were two years ago. I, I hope these businesses can, can, you know, continue to make progress. And, and we want, I think I said this at the community forum here, that was, that was held on October 5th. I hope that, that we would be a destination spot, that La Mesa would be a, a place where you want to come start a business. You would want to come, you know, launch a new endeavor or start a restaurant, you know, here in the city because, because of the vibe we have and the people that come and, and the, and the sense of community and, and the, the amount of life that takes place on a, on a Friday night or a weekend in the downtown village. So that would be my hope. But yeah, there's, you know, we are, we are, we have stumbled out of COVID, all of us, right? And now we're at this reality check of where do we go from here? And businesses that can, that can be resilient and bounce back are finding a way to pivot and move to whatever is different and new. They're finding creative ways to how they, how they offer their services. I know coffee shops were just selling coffee by the pound out, out of the windows and not even opening and doing other creative things just to stay afloat, to get to here, to now start 2.0 of their business, you know, now in this post-COVID culture.
Yeah, we are just trying to figure out how to re-put the pieces back together. And La Mesa is a little unique because we went into the COVID pandemic fragmented because of the riots. But one of the first public events in La Mesa was the Juneteenth event. Did you attend that event?
You know, I, I didn't. I don't know that I was invited or, or, I shouldn't say I was invited. I, I didn't, I wasn't made aware of the event. If I was invited, I would absolutely attend. I wasn't aware of it. It was this year, right? Was the first year was this year? Or, okay. Yeah, I did not, I was not able to attend. I didn't know about it.
You, you mentioned also in terms, in your keeping the community safe, that you support law enforcement to clean up the streets. What do you mean by clean up the streets?
Yeah. And that's, that's kind of a broad, that's a broad term, you know, Henry. Also, I'll make it more specific. And I, I didn't get a chance to say this at the community forum because we had 90 seconds to respond on, on the homeless issue. We can't expect law enforcement to go beyond what they are trained to do. Our law enforcement are trained to, to be able to fight crime and to be able to enforce the law. That is their job. What we have not, now, Grant, there are, there are programs connected to law enforcement that are able to do what I'm about to say, but what they're not equipped to do is deal with drug addiction or any kind of life-controlling addiction or mental illness. And so some of the encounters that unfortunately they have, it's all three are needed. The enforcement of crime and be able to deal with some of the life-controlling addiction and/or mental illness. And I think I talked about, and I don't want to move too fast ahead either, but, but the homeless issue, which is really a crisis now in La Mesa. It's no longer just an issue. It's a crisis, which crisis is a, another word for crossroads. We're at a crossroads. We have to do something. Otherwise, you know, it's going to be, there's going to be a possible real, real negative outcome. And it's already negative right now. It's challenging right now. But law enforcement's idea that they would clean up the streets, you know, it's not their responsibility. You know, we got other, other programs that, that can help and assist, but, and with like the home program. The home program has been deployed by, by our city to help. And what's been told me, and there's two gentlemen, and they're really nice guys. And they are, you know, plainclothes gentlemen, which, which we have heard and what, what's been told to me is that even if law enforcement comes with, with grace and, and a proper approach, there's still, when a homeless person sees an officer coming, what, what's the immediate thought? I'm in trouble. I've done something wrong. I've broken the law. I'm going to jail. So the home program comes as kind of a, a de-escalating, they kind of neutralize the situation. They come and then they offer the services that they have at their disposal to get someone into a shelter, to get them into a clinic, or just help them get off the streets. So cleaning up the streets is a collaborative effort. It's not, we can't only put that, I probably should rephrase that on the website. We can only put that on law enforcement. That, that is, that is a, that's a civic responsibility for all of us. That, that's, that's residents, that's police, that's the home program, that's other community efforts. And as I, I didn't get to share at the community forum, we have to partner with groups that are already doing things that we are not. La Mesa doesn't necessarily, not that we, not, not that we can't, we don't necessarily, Henry, have to start a, a center for life-controlling addiction. We don't necessarily have to start a clinic for those who battle mental illness. There are already East County too, but even broader San Diego, there are places that we can, that whether it's nonprofit, where it really a little to no cost back to the city, where we can refer and get those the help needed without us feeling like we have to start something in order, in order to see progress in that area. So I hope that makes sense.
So I just didn't, wasn't sure what you meant, clean up the streets from graffiti or homeless. So I understood that to be homeless. You know, there is a court decision that says you can't clean, you can't clear homeless camps from the streets, from public areas unless there's a shelter. And La Mesa doesn't have a shelter. So how does La Mesa clean the streets of homeless if it doesn't even have a shelter to send them to?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I, I'm not, and this is, I need to become more familiar with that law. I, I didn't know that was the actual law. Now, what I would probably follow that up and say, does that mean that in order for us to break up an encampment, we would have to have a shelter in La Mesa City Limits, 91941 or 42, or we have to have an open shelter where we could bring them that's in proximity to East County? I don't know that. If there's, if the answer is yes, we can send them to anywhere that, that's, that's an organized, maybe vetted or approved shelter, then I would say that, that's, that's what's going to help. The problem is we have this cycle and, and I will just share it really quickly. You know, we have to, I, I think I said this, we have, we are asking the right questions about homelessness. We're just answering them really kind of in the improper and incorrect order. We need to, we need to answer the, we ask the questions first. What are we dealing with? Because I think sometimes we come into something very ill-equipped to handle a situation based on, based on our history, based on maybe our bias or just, you know, our inconvenience or the fact that I have a homeless guy, you know, in my front yard, you know, it's, I feel unsafe. You know, all of those factors play into what we presume to be the best step moving forward. Well, I've identified through conversations with other friends who have had multiple dealings and long-term relationship with the homeless community, especially in Alcoa, that there are three types of homeless, Henry. There are those who are pre-homeless, which are often those who are, you know, recently lost a job, some of their life transition that's kind of altered and shaken them, where now they're living in their car or a short-term kind of motel situation. A lot of them have gym memberships where they, you know, get up in the morning, go to the gym, take a shower. They have, a lot of them hold down jobs. They, they go to work. They come back and, and then they, they repeat the same thing over again. That's usually transitional. That is probably the, the best of the three, that we have the chance to bring the most, I don't want to say reformation, the most transformation in a short period of time, because all it may take is, is the right job or the right break. And we have, and I know this because of our partnerships with La Mesa Spring Valley Schools. We have families in our school districts, right here in the city, who are pre-homeless, who basically mom lives in a car. They have five kids, let's say. This is the actual situation. They have five kids. Mom lives in a car. One or two kids live with aunt and uncle. One or two other kids crashing on some friend's couch. And so you've now fragmented the family, but yet that is the situation they find themselves. They are pre-homeless. Then the second phase is those who are newly homeless, those who, those who have found themselves past the pre-homeless phase. And usually these are, these are the, are the unsheltered friends that we see who have a shopping cart with their entire life's belongings with them, right? Stacked, you know, with, with sidewalls, you know, whether it's a guitar, you know, all, their, their life's possessions are in the shopping cart. And, and sometimes, you know, addiction kind of follows, you know, maybe is the entryway to that, that phase. And, and this is what I found too. I, I wouldn't throw a percentage out, but I do know this. And if we have time, I can share with you a story about my personal interaction with the homeless community because we've had, you know, multiple homeless be a part of our church and, and like that. So, so there's that middle ground of newly homeless. Then the last part, which is the most sad, Henry, and devastating part of, of the three, you know, whether pre-homeless, newly homeless, is chronically homeless. And chronically homeless, sadly, we sometimes have to love them until death. We sadly have to walk a journey with them where they, they do not want help. And, and most of the time, the chronically homeless are usually connected to some kind of life-controlling addiction and often mental illness. And unfortunately and sadly, sometimes both. And, and there is no reasoning, there is no, you know, as far as, as far as negotiating with someone who is, I, I don't like to say the word crazy, but somebody who's not in their right mind. There, there's, there's no way to negotiate around that. So, so that is the hardest part. So what I would say is, you know, I think La Mesa, I think home program or the census that was taken says La Mesa has like 30 homeless. They've identified about 30 homeless. I, I tend to think it's a little more, I'm not saying this inaccurate, I'm just saying what I see, I would think it's a little more. It's probably a number that flexes up and down depending on the, on the week and the month. But, but I would say that we have quite a few chronically homeless who are really, you know, they're devastated by their, by their circumstances. Who knows how long they've been like that? And really it's a challenge for them to get out. So, so what I've seen, this is the hard part. This is the hard part from my, and this is where I would say like, you know, if you asked me, what, what are we going to do about the homeless? Well, we have to lead with compassion. Like, like we first, they're humans. They're, they, you know, they, they had a mother and a father at some point that, that loved them and cared for them. And some life event, whatever, whatever the circumstances were that led, they, they're, they're still human. And, and I said this, you know, at the forum, we have to understand that there, there's, that inherently all human life is valuable. So we lead with compassion, which means sometimes we get them, you know, a meal. Or sometimes we get them, our church just made some little, they're like, like unsheltered care kits, where like a toothbrush, a pair of socks, bar soap, you know, like a protein bar and a water, you know, just a real simple thing, because sometimes we don't always know how to respond. But what, what I found is sometimes, Henry, that becomes a Band-Aid and we're really not helping them. And, and because there's not that final step of reformation where it's, I'm, I'm going to get past my circumstance and get the proper help, but get on the right medication so I, I can help fight the mental illness, get to a program that's going to help me fight my life-controlling addiction. And so I've seen that. So that's the issue that we face because the high percentage, I believe, are somewhere on the spectrum between, between newly homeless and in chronically homeless. It creates a far more issue, which really comes back to cleaning up the streets, which I, I would not put all on law enforcement. That is, that is, that is, that's a city issue. That's a city government issue. And back to the cyclical effect, the homeless population, you know, on our doorstep of our church and on the doorstep of businesses affects consumers, affects clientele, affects parishioners. It doesn't mean we turn them away, but we want businesses to thrive. Businesses can't thrive if there's an, if there's a homeless person camp there and they have defecated or something else on their front doorstep before, while customers are walking. It just, it just can't happen. So, so that's kind of the broad stroke. I did not get to share that at the forum because that, that was obviously longer than 90 seconds. So I hope that gives you a sense of kind of where my mind and heart is at.
If you mentioned the law enforcement can't clean up the streets, who would do it? And where would you clean them to?
Yeah. And, and back to, that, that's a great question. So, so law enforcement can only do so much. I mean, you can only, they can only do so much, which is if there's a crime. They can't help someone who likes to dealing with, with addiction or dealing with mental illness. So, so this puts it back on us to find a way that, you know, there's been a lot of ideas and different ways to, you know, shelter them or whatever. And I think what it comes down to is we have to identify or come to grips with the reality that, that some just don't want help. And that's going to create the perpetual problem. If, if everyone on the streets wanted help and want, now, I think at the core, Henry, everyone would, if you pulled every homeless person who was able to, 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 you know, craft an answer back to and, and with, with a clear, you know, answer, say, say, no, I really don't want to be homeless. I think they all would probably say that at the core. But let me talk to you about Matthew T. I won't share with you his last name because I, I've known him for nine years. Matthew T. is a, is a chronically homeless young man here in La Mesa. He lives by my house here. He, he camps in the, in the Little League dugout at Sunset Park. And Matthew T. is a very nice young man. He's a very educated young man. He's very intelligent. I've had some very deep conversations with him over the last nine years, less than the last few years. I, I still have contact with him, but not as much as I did maybe, you know, five to seven years ago. And Matthew stumbled in the, the door of our church and we embraced him. We brought him in as family. We, we, you know, fed him. We were able to help him. We would buy him clothes. We bought him a sleeping bag. We would, we would do whatever we could to help his situation. He would, he was still homeless at that time and we would, you know, he would buy him a sleeping bag and then go back to Sunset Park and sleep in the dugout. Well, then we have a family in our church, Henry, that, that runs an actual boarding care for those who are disabled of, of any sort. And that family in our church without, and they get paid by the state to do this. This is, this is a, you know, it's a business for them. They offered, said, you know, we want to bring Matthew in free of charge. And this family, Henry, so gracious of them, they, they helped them establish this SSI. They got him a cell phone. You know, he got cleaned up. Now he has a shower every day. He's got a, you know, they have little, small little dorms in this, in this place in Spring Valley. And he's drinking coffee. These guys are drinking coffee, smoking cigarettes, hanging out with other, other people that are there. He's having a good time. Well, then, then sadly, the, the, the mental illness side of him got the best of him. And he called the police on himself when he was asked to take out the trash. Something as small as taking out the trash, he felt threatened and called the police on himself. And really sadly blew- And really sadly blew a great opportunity to get off the streets. And that was about, that was approximately six to seven years ago that happened. And, and I've been in contact, I've been in contact with Matthew's stepfather, we have, then he's gone to jail a few times in between, we've been there to get him out to jail, and, you know, now his, his stepfather asks me, Henry, like, so what next? It's like, well, if he stays on his medication, he's usually okay, once he gets off his medication, it's sadly a different story. So Matthew now, to this day, and I've seen him recently in the last week or so, he is back on the streets, um, as skinny as I've ever seen him, not healthy, not looking well. And my wife and I, you know, with, with, with grief in our hearts, because we have vested interest with him. Um, it's just, it's just sad, it's just sad to see that this young man who has so much life, who has value, he has value to God, he has value to this community, has valued it to our family, our church family, and he's living a life sadly isolated and alone. And he, but, but the, at the end of the day, he doesn't want help. And this is the same young man, Henry, that I drove through, he was in my truck, I've had, I've had him, I've had him in my vehicle, driving through the drive-through McDonald's on Fletcher Parkway, right by Costco. And he's, he's super APT, thanks so much, man, appreciate it, appreciate it, thank you so much, this has really helped me, I said, Matthew, I, I don't think it is. You know, I said, buddy, this is just a Band-Aid, I'm not helping you, this is just a Band-Aid. And so that's probably my, my biggest concern is yes, Henry, we can't put it on law enforcement. Yes, we're beyond an issue, we're at a crisis level. And honestly, I don't know what, what, what the hundred percent most authentic uh, answer is for the, for the, the absolute eradication of, of homelessness solution. I don't know what that is because of what I've just shared, that some don't want help. And, you know, what's the old saying, you can only, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but they gotta drink, you know, and so I think that's where we're at right now, which, which is back on us still to figure out how we can partner. I think, you know, if I can, I wanna do more research on the law about the encampments, because if we could break up some of the encampments and, and, but yet send them to a resource, send them to a place, not, not, not totally, you know, abandon them and say, you gotta get out of here, you know, you're, we let, we have let homeless camp out at our church. And our, our pastors have said, you can stay here, just clean up after, you know, clean up when you leave, you know, we, we've actually allowed them to do this, which in some ways probably hasn't helped them either, it kind of continues to foster the idea that I don't need to get out of the situation, because I have a nice little place to stay with shade and, you know, I have a nice little bathroom here behind the marquee of the, of the church sign. Hey, I'm, I'm okay, I'm good for the next, next couple of weeks, until they're not good, and then they, they overstayed their welcome, because they, they do unfortunately leave trash, they do not clean up after themselves, they do not help the situation. So, so I, I feel bad that I really don't have an answer, but I know there's people far above mining your pay grade who haven't been able to figure it out. If you go to downtown San Diego right now, Henry, it is the worst I've ever seen it. And I go to a lot of Padres games, and you know what I'm talking about, down at East Village and, and, and out, out to borrow, borrow Logan a little bit and some of the other surrounding areas. And it is, it is, it is absolutely rampant. But I said this at the forum, San La Mesa is, is now what San Diego was fifteen, twenty years ago, there was homeless fifteen, twenty years ago downtown. It's nowhere near what it is, what it is today. And my fear, if we don't do something, that San La Mesa, ten, fifteen years down the road, will look like San Diego now. And that is, that is a great concern, which is why I'm, you know, I wanna be a part of the solution. I don't have an answer, I don't have a great answer, I have some ideas, but I, I, I really hope that we can figure this out so that we can help them and help foster our, a healthy community, business thriving, people thriving, helping our, our unsheltered friends, and, and it, it, it's a win-win, but right now, we're at a crossroads.
Your next priority is supporting economic growth, and you mentioned you promised to provide businesses with the incentives and funding to help them through the years of hurt and pandemic and big government. What incentives and funding are you talking about and where would the funding come from? Would that be an increase in taxes?
No, no, just the opposite, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to fight, you know, our, our La Mesa Victory Team is trying to fight against more taxes, because here's the thing, people, and I'll, I'll get to the question too, Henry, people are hurting right now, and people are hurting at the pump, you know, I drive by Costco today here in La Mesa. People, the line's still at the door, but guess what, people still have to get gas, even if it's six, seven bucks a gallon, whatever it is today, six seventy-nine, seven bucks. People are hurting. And, and we're, I feel like we're adding layer upon layer of hurt, and the, if we tax, it's one more layer of hurt. If we add more expense, it's one more, the cut, like I said before, cost of living, inflation, gas. I, I will gladly share the mileage tax, which is off the table now with San Diego, but I'm sure it's a matter of time before it will be back on. That's why it's still an issue that, that myself and, and our La Mesa Victory Team is fighting for. That's six hundred dollars a year per person, so my household will pay twelve hundred dollars a year for a gas tax on top, or mileage tax, excuse me, on top of the already high gas prices. So, so that's, so we, we have a hurt there. So we have to do whatever we can to foster over here with, so how do we, so the question, how do we foster growth, business development, growth of economy, wanting, like I said, La Mesa to be a destination for businesses to wanna come in the land? How do we do that without raising taxes? Well, one, one thing to start with, and I, and I don't wanna speak for her, because she is beyond well-spoken than myself, but Laura Lothian, who's actually a current sitting, you know, council member, has been given ad hoc to the ARPA funds, so the ARPA funds, I don't, don't quote me on it, I wanna say it's like six to eight million dollars. And I think the project is called like Business Facade, something where they can get up to like five thousand dollars to help improve the facade of their business, part of their business. So, so this, that's a great first step that was really given to us. Um, that, that, that's federal money that was granted to us, and now it's just, there's a pro, there's an application process, and I know uh, that city council has been dealing with that, I don't know how that's being vetted and decided, but businesses can apply for the ARPA funds, which helps. So that didn't come, I mean, everything always comes back to, well, if, if, nothing's free, right? You know, I get these checks in the mail from our government going, okay, I have to pay for this at some point in time, right? This is, this is not free money for my kids. But, uh, this is not direct tax to us in La Mesa right now, we're not adding tax upon tax upon tax, layer upon layer upon people who are already hurting, just trying, you know, I had a friend, yeah, two days ago, Henry, tell me this, he said, and he, he's got a great job, he's a teacher. Um, his wife is a stay-at-home mom, he's got twins and, and another, another, she's got three kids. He said for the first time, he said, we, our budget is in the red. And it's not that he's having to spend, well, yeah, he's spending more, he's not living frivolously. He lives a very, a very cash, you know, cash budget lifestyle. He just can't afford to live here in San Diego with inflation, cost of living, gas prices, food prices. And which is why, you know, it's not, it's not a revelation to anyone. I, I can't tell you how many of our friends in our circle have moved out of, out of California, right? For these reasons, you know, so, so we have to make it attractive to stay, we have to want businesses to thrive. And we gotta figure out ways to do it without, without taxing our people, because that's not the way to do it. But I think, I think we also have to cut our businesses a break. Some of the regulations, I won't get into them, Henry, but some of the regulations we've asked our, our businesses to do, just put more pressure on existing stress and tension that they already have, and they're still coming out. Some of them are still paying off debt or trying to pay, you know, because they, they still had to pay their employee, they still had to pay their, you know, their insurance or their, their liability, their tax, you know, other stuff over, over COVID. Some of them are still paying that off. I know businesses that were just on the brink, great thriving businesses that were on the brink, had it not been for one thing, they would have shut down. So we have to do whatever we can, it's a delicate balance, because some of these businesses are fragile right now, they're on, they're, they're still on the brink. We're not out of the wood, we're, we might be post-COVID, we're not out of the woods, post-COVID culture with whether we're gonna see businesses survive or not. So we gotta do whatever we can to put some wind in their sails, help them out. Maybe it's not even financial, maybe it's just other support the city could offer, you know, whether, whether we get, you know, teams of people helping them, you know, clean up the, literally clean up the streets, I went by, after Oktoberfest, it was, it was pretty messy down there. We can literally clean up the streets, not, not in a metaphorical sense, but in actual tangible, literal sense. You know, we can get teams of people to do that, and I know there's a lot of people that love the city that much. And I saw it after the riots, Henry, I saw the day after the riots. Um, and the riots, you know, I won't get into the political side of who was the perpetrators, but, um, venture to say there was less La Mesa residents than you think at the riots, they were not residents of La Mesa by and large. But the next day, I went down there, the next day, we had residents all over East County. And I was up all night, I got down there a little late, and literally by eleven o'clock or noon, Henry, the entire thing was cleaned up. Windows were boarded up, glass was swept up, things were cleaned up by noon the next day, which, which says, and, and we see this in crisis, we saw after nine eleven, you know, a nation, you know, bipartisan, it wasn't about Republican, Democrat, Independent, Green, it didn't matter at that point. We were all Americans after nine eleven, right? You saw a nation rally, and I saw the same thing happen in La Mesa. So I think the same thing could happen with businesses, we rally around businesses and wanna support them, it comes back to permits too, Sheldon's Coffee Shop downtown La Mesa, they needed an awning, they have a beautiful little coffee shop there, they needed an awning. It was, it was taking them months and months for the, for the planning department to get them an awning, uh, just to cover, give their, their, their customers some shade. Once, once it got on the radar, got done, up, and now their customers are happy. So we have to, we have to, we have to foster that, that, those kind of, um, things to make them happen, help them, want, wanna see them thrive, we should do whatever we can to help them thrive. And there's things that are under control, it don't cost us any money. You know, getting a, expediting a permit doesn't cost, we already pay in the planning department, they're, they're qualified people, it's just expediting a process. That's helping them without us spending a dollar to, to pipe, you know, money in their business. But it's helping their business, because it's helping them operate in a way where their customers are happy, and happy customers keep on coming back.
Good, Tony, we're running out of time, I got a bunch more questions, so.
Oh, man, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm talking too much.
That's okay, um, you also mentioned that the quote on your website, the city council must help businesses owners thrive and eliminate roadblocks to success. What are the kinds of roadblocks to success that the city council can eliminate? And back to my other questions, what kind of incentives can the city council give to promote business?
Yeah, so that, that's kind of a two-part question that, there again, comes back cyclical. Um, I think we can promote a lot of things, I think we put less barriers, I, I think, like I said, these are things that don't cost us money. Um, I don't, I don't wanna get into all the details of what, but there's things regarding certain waste disposals that, that restaurants have to do now, and those just become cumbersome. Those become, those become added, added things to them that, in a, in an already stressful environment, I think we can, we can deregulate some of the requirements without, you know, without saying, hey, do whatever you want. We can deregulate so some of these businesses can just operate how they were before, they weren't, they weren't being regulated that way before COVID, but we've gotten this, you know, we've kind of got this, uh, heavy hand right now, and, and trying to do this and tax this, and, you know, make sure you recycle this and do that. And so I think we could deregulate on some of the things we're asking of them to do. And back to some of the things that would help them thrive, back to the cyclical side, you know, I've had people, I've had business owners tell me this, business owners have told me, they don't feel safe walking down the streets after dark. So, well, if they don't feel safe, how are customers gonna feel safe? So this, and, and part of this, back to the cycle, this comes back to homeless, you don't know if homeless are, you know, some people walk up in the morning at their business and a homeless person is sleeping on their doorstep of, of, of their place of employment, of their business. So it comes back to solve, because if we solve the homeless issue, then we're allowing businesses to thrive. And then, which means there's now more, more customers coming in, which means now there's more tax, there's more, there's more sales tax coming back to the city. And now we can fund some of the other stuff that we can't fund right now, because if businesses aren't generating the revenue, guess what? The city's not getting that money back in the sales tax. So, so like I said, it's this kind of vicious cycle, and if one of those roadblocks is in the way, it kind of halts the whole cycle from, from continuing back to thriving. And so I think whatever in my power, you know, as, as elected, whatever in my power can do to help, you know, like I said, deregulate, foster business, uh, in, into, into places where they, like I said, it's not us giving them just free handout, free handout money, like the ARPA funds are great, but other ways that we can just help them. And I think, you know, here's the thing too, Henry, I really have come to place and, and in this, in this era, I would say, of political divide that we, we find ourselves in, you know, you probably see it, I see it on social media. Uh, not as much now, but way more over COVID, way more around the last election. You know, I can't disagree with you, not, not you, I'm just, I'm making a statement. I can't disagree with someone out there disliking me, unfriending me, coming at, you know, I think what has to happen is we gotta learn to have conversations. I have a lot of friends in my circle that I do not agree with, and they don't agree with me, but we're friends, because we can have conversation. And I know there's no prejudgment, there's no condemnation, there's nothing standing in the way of us coming to a place where we can say, you know, in marriage too, any relationship, you say, we're gonna agree to disagree, right? But, but having a conversation is healthy. Saying, I'm not gonna talk to you because you don't think like me, you don't act like me, you don't look like me, you don't believe like me, the conversation's over, we missed the chance to have a conversation. So part of this has to start with us sitting down with local business owners and going, how can we help? You know what I found, Henry, too, in our, our adoption of the schools, like, we, we've adopted schools, uh, over the last decade. And we used to give schools what they thought they needed. So back to school time, you know, about a month ago, every year, you know, providing backpacks and, you know, school supplies for, you know, for teachers, whatever. And my wife, who works for La Mesa Spring Valley School District, she said, Tony, you know what? Ask the teachers, the teachers will tell you what they need, because guess what, she said, you know, you know a ream of paper is a big deal for a teacher, because teachers only have limited budget, and guess what? When the budgets run out, those teachers are pulling that money out of their own pockets, because they need those supplies. So teachers out of their own, on their own dime are funding those things. So the conversation changed for us with our adoption process, instead of me telling you, Henry, you know, here's the gift, we know this is what you need. As opposed to, you know, why don't you tell us what you need? And so that opened the door for us, and now the principal would call me and go, hey, Tony, we have this young man, he, you know, his parents don't have a lot of money, his toes are coming out of his shoes. Can you, can you help? Absolutely, what size is he? Bought him a pair of, you know, nice, you know, sneakers, bought him another pair of like, more like casual dress shoes. That's simple, that's tangible, because we knew, we, we found a need and we met it. And so I think that's the thing we have to, we have to have conversations, we have to sit down with these businesses and, and other area leaders and say, how can we help? What does it look like? And, and if it's cost attached, then let's find a way to fundraise that. If it's, if it's something we can do in our power that doesn't cost any money, those are the, that's the low-hanging fruit, Henry, right? Like the deregulation, that's something we can do right now. You know, helping someone, helping someone, you know, flourishing a business by us helping them with, with something on their front, front doorstep or cleaning up, literally cleaning up the streets, or, or helping have conversation about how we're gonna rectify the homeless situation, so they can have a clean doorstep, not encumbered by anyone, you know, blocking a customer from coming in. You know, we have to have those conversations, if we don't, then we're probably already behind the eight ball and we're not willing to change. But having the conversations is the first step toward, toward reconciliation, reformation, and these businesses thriving down the road.
Okay, Tony, we got about one minute left, actually, that was like ten minutes ago, but I just wanna ask you one last thing.
Yes.
What are the most significant endorsements you'd like to share? And how can people find out more about your campaign and volunteer and donate to you?
Oh, thanks so much, yeah, they, thank you, thank you for that, Henry. So my website is TonyforLaMesa, the number four, Tony, or, or, yeah, it's Tonyfor, I think it's actually Tony F O R La Mesa dot com. And you can see what, what you've read there, some of, some of my key talking points. Uh, there is a donate button, no pressure to give, we always love the support and we appreciate it, you know, we're in the homestretch now, we're let, we're a little over a month away and anything, and, but we also have opportunity, we are doing canvassing, uh, pretty much every Saturday and even throughout the week, and, and really it's customizable. We have a really cool app that's at our disposal, that's people can go out in groups of two on their own anytime and hit some of the, um, high propensity voters, those who have history of voting, and it's just a great opportunity for that. Uh, but yeah, so, so TonyforLaMesa dot com, uh, that would be, be a great way for you to find, get, get more in touch with me. My number's on, you, you can, like, seriously, I'm accessible, text me, call me, I will answer any questions, I will do my best to.
And your endorsements?
And my endorsements, yes, thank you. Endorsements are, uh, the Republican Party of San Diego, the Lincoln Club, San Diego County Gun Owners, and Pietro's Pizza, how about that in La Mesa? Other than that, that, that's it for right now, I know there's some others coming here shortly, but that, that's what I have right now. Thank you for your time, Henry, I really appreciate it.
Tony, you've been very gracious with your time, thank you for sharing so much of it, I'm so sorry to cut you off, you have a lot to say.
I talked too long, I talked too much, talked too much, sorry.
It's all good, that's your job, and, and, um, thank you, thank you for your time.
Tony, thank you so much, thank you for East County Magazine, I, I'm East County for Life, I love East County, thank you guys for what you do, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.